We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Hazer?
Here.
Ms. Ely?
Here.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Present.
All right. We have the color guard from the North Stafford High School Air Force Junior ROTC presenting the colors, please.
Forward. Full. Order. Forward. Color. Turn. Green light. Forward. March.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
Forward. Color. Right. Eight. Brown. Color. Forward. March.
We'd like to thank Cadet Saga Draka, Cadet Brookover, Cadet Fralen, Cadet Gavino Collins, Cadet Lopez Torres, and Cadet Panchiri, and Colonel Catherine Bacon and Master Sergeant Juan Mendoza, who are the instructors of the North Stafford High School JROTC program, for being with us this evening. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda? Second?
Motion by Ms. Hazer, second. By Ms. Decatur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards and recognitions. We have one recognition this evening, and I think she's blushing. This is our lovely and much appreciated Clerk of the School Board. I'm going to read this proclamation that was signed by the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Certificate of recognition. By virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Whereas, school board clerks in each locality throughout the Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas, school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas, school board clerks perform other duties in connection with the school business of his or her county or city, as may be required by the school board, and whereas, school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas, school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, and whereas, school board clerks ensure that students achieve their highest potential and provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents. Now therefore, I, Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize February 19th to 23rd, 2018, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens.
Thank you very much.
And you got the card, right? Okay. All right. Thank you, Missy. We appreciate everything you do for us. All right, now we have a special presentation of the fiscal year 2017, which is the FY17 Audit by RSMUS LLP. Is that you?
It is not me.
I was gonna say.
But I'm going to introduce Lou Cannon, who's a partner with RSM, and he's gonna quickly go over the audit results. And just a little bit of background, they completed their fifth year of our audit contract with us.
Say he looks awfully familiar.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I think the last time I was slated to be here, a little snow created a problem, so I made it here tonight. And appreciate, one of the things I'd like to say is I appreciate all the help that we get from your staff, Chris and everybody. We're fun people, but we are somewhat of a pain in the neck, and everybody here has a good attitude, and we certainly appreciate their help. It's a team effort getting it all done. I think you have two documents in front of you. We're gonna start with the larger of the documents. This is your comprehensive annual financial report. And while this is 140 pages of fun, I'm going to stick with the overall results rather than wade into the numbers. We audit really under four sets of requirements. Our normal professional standards, generally accepted auditing standards. Because you're a government, we audit under government auditing standards. Because you receive federal grants, the Federal Single Audit Act applies, which requires testing. Because you receive money and are governed by the Commonwealth, the specifications for audits that are put out by the Virginia Auditor of Public Accounts, there's special testing we have to do under those. So there's a raft of testing and reporting that we wind up doing. On your financial statements themselves, you can basically get one of four types of opinions. If we don't think your financial statements are fairly stated, we would render what's called an adverse opinion. If something was so contingent that we couldn't render an opinion, we would disclaim. If we agree that they were, the financial statements were fairly stated except for a particular item, we would qualify our opinion except for those items, or that item or items. Then there's what's called an unmodified, sometimes called a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can give as auditors, and you do receive a clean opinion. It's what every regulatory body is looking for in the financial statements from a government, and you do receive a clean opinion. We also, because you receive federal money and money from the state, we test your compliance and literally render opinions on what are deemed to be major programs, and you receive a clean opinion on your major program that was tested this year. So that's as good as it gets. In doing all this work, we're also looking at your processes and controls over processes. And if we perceive or see that there are deficiencies, we would report those. Now, control deficiency exists when the design or operation of a control doesn't allow staff or management in the normal course of doing their duties to either prevent or detect and correct errors in the financial statements. So there really, those really come in three levels, and the two most serious levels we would report, that would be either a significant deficiency or material weakness, and you know, there were no control deficiencies to report to you. There were no compliance violations to report. So as audits go, this is the best thing you can have, which is a very dull report. There's nothing to go over with you. No findings to be reported to any federal or other agency. You also have in front of you a corner staple document. This is, in our terminology, this is called a SAS 114 Communication. It stands for Statement on Auditing Standards 114. It's a required communication with those charged with governance, and it basically grew out of a study of audit failures. And it turns out that if auditors had direct communication with the board, or an audit committee, or some other committee of the board, probably the Enron, WorldCom, mega audit failures, probably a fair number could have been prevented. So out of that study, because at the time, the communication was between the auditors and management, so getting the board involved. So out of that came this requirement to communicate with the board, and to tell the board very specific things. If there had been disagreements with the board, and this year, there were none. If there were adjustments, if we come in and we're testing, and we have the trial balances to look at for all the funds, if we have to propose audit adjustments to make them accurate, then it indicates that something has gone wrong somewhere. Maybe someone needs to have some more education, or you know, a key person, you're down a person and you don't have time to get to it. You know, there can be many, many reasons. But if there are a lot of proposed adjustments by the auditors, it's sort of indicative that there may be, you know, there may be a greater problem there, and we did not have any audit adjustments that we had to propose. So that tells you that there is a clean, a clean process, set of processes going on. If there were estimates that were, we thought were very aggressive in how they were determined, we would go over with those with you as a result of this communication, and there were none. So I'm digging for something bad to say, but there's nothing this year that's been fairly clean. Nothing has risen to the level of something that would be reported in the compliance section of your CAFR, and there, you know, there were no disagreements with management, problems with estimates, or you know, lots of adjustments and that sort of thing. So again, it's a very clean year, which makes for a very quick report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No? Well, thank you. We're glad you were bored.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
And I mean, we're a fun bunch, and I can see, you know, Chris is grinning, but I think that's because we're leaving. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Glad the weather held out for you this evening. All right. That brings us to the first, well, the public hearing. This evening, we're gonna have a public hearing on the fiscal year 19 budget, and we're gonna invite anyone who wants to speak to the board about the budget to come forth and speak. Following the end of those comments, we will close the public hearing, and then we will open the floor to comments on anything anyone wants to talk to the board for. So you get to talk twice tonight, but on the first round, please limit the comments to the budget, because it is a public hearing on the budget. I'm gonna read the little spiel that we have to read beforehand. Individuals wishing to comment may do so by responding to the general invitation of the chairman, but before I do a general invitation, I'm gonna read the names of the people that signed up. So when you'll come up, and if you want to speak and you haven't signed up, when you come up, there is a sign-up sheet up here, and after you make your comments, you can sign up, because we do need to keep the information for the record. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation. If the spokesperson represents an organization, speakers shall also announce the purpose of the topic of their comments, which will be the budget. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees, or division program services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in SCPS Policy 1113 Public Complaints. So I'm gonna just read that once, but that's gonna apply to both of our comment periods. The first speaker that we have is Tiffany Donati, and after Tiffany is going to be Colleen Wieners and Tina Reed. So if Colleen and Tina want to line up, we can follow, and then I'll read the next group. Is this Ms. Donati? Oh, and if you can give your name and your address as well.
Sure. Do you want to?
Oh, yes, and thank you. You can give that to our clerk. If you wish to hand in your comments, or hand in any materials that you want put in the record, then you can give them to the clerk when you finish your comments.
Okay.
Thank you. And the clerk is going to time it, the little red, green, and yellow lights. You probably know the drill. When it's red, you're done.
Okay.
Three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tiffany Donati. I live in Stafford County. I'm the Counseling Director at Dixon Smith Middle School, as well as the cross-country intermural coach, and I'd like to recognize my several cross-country intermural coaches that are here supporting me, as well as fellow students and parents. In the fall of 2013, a review of intermural offerings for our middle school students was conducted. Based on feedback from coaches both at the high school and middle school level, coupled with a compilation of a cross-country meet, an interest survey, it was determined that the addition of middle school cross-country as an official sport would be a positive asset to Stafford County programs. Why cross-country? Running is a primary movement that the human body is designed to do. Running falls into several activity categories. It is an individual sport, because a participant can be successful simply by setting and meeting their personal goals. It can be a team sport, where runners can score points as they finish and create a team score. It is an outdoor activity, easily performed in a variety of outdoor settings, ranging from a run, a jog, a hike, or a walk. Running is also considered to be a lifetime sport, an activity easily modified over a person's lifetime to fit their challenging wellness and activity goals and fitness levels. Right, Dr. Vincent? Recognizing healthy habits need to be nurtured, and the need for middle school students to have opportunities for socialization and team building. And below are some goals for this program. Offer this activity at each middle school during the months of September and October, with accumulating simulated race experience at the end of October. Offer a cross-country experience to all middle school students who do not participate in the fall sports, including football, field hockey, or volleyball. And specifically, provide sixth grade students, both male and female, an activity to participate in at the start of the school year that did not require a tryout, meaning no cuts, and a great deal of prior, not needing a great deal of prior experience. And to offer an activity that did not require a lot of equipment. From a district perspective, such a program is important, as it demonstrates the continued support in the area of Title IX. The promotion of students to female students in the middle school among sports athletes ensures hope that female athletes would choose to continue this activity and progress at the high school level. It sets the stage for increasing the number of female athletes. Such an opportunity demonstrates the district's efforts to proactively address the potential Title IX inequities by providing for the development of a feeder program to the high school programs. Participation numbers in the past. At the 2016-17 race, we had 235 middle school runners participate. This past year in 17 and 18, we had over 250 students participate.
Oh. If you could just wrap it up in a few seconds, but we will read everything you have, because it'll be in the record.
Hey, sure. I just want to point out, the budget impact would only cost $16,000, and you're talking about reaching potentially over 300 students. Uniforms could be track uniforms, and we would use public facilities like parks for the races. So now is the time to implement cross-country at the middle school level. Thank you.
All right. Colleen Wieners?
Good evening. My name is Colleen Wieners. I'm a Stafford resident. I last spoke to you all on January 24th, 2017. Sadly, nothing has changed, so I find myself back here once again to plead my case. As an administrative assistant at Colonial Forge High School, I am tasked with a multitude of responsibilities, and my days are filled to the brim. Honestly, I could stay late each and every day to catch up on all my work, because while I tend to these tasks, I must also tend to a myriad of interruptions from staff and students needing help. Let me just say that I love what I do, who I do it with, and who I do it for within this building. I must do my job pretty well, because the Forge staff chose me as Service Employee of the Year last year. That award validated the work I do, but when I look at my paycheck, I am clearly undervalued at the superintendent's administrative level. Most of us at Forge learned of potential jobs, because we had already been vetted as parent volunteers, booster club officers, paraprofessionals, et cetera. We were familiar with the staff, and our work ethic was well-known. We have a varied employment history and bring a wealth of experience, although in most cases, we have not been given compensation for that experience. I am in my eighth year at Forge, and my current salary of $26,893 has been stagnant far too long. Why don't I leave, you might ask? Well, I truly love my building and my coworkers. I shouldn't have to leave to be fairly compensated. I have a vested interest in this school and this county as a taxpaying resident. The administrative assistant staff needs to know there is a plan in place to evaluate and compensate us fairly. To hear hollow promises that a market-based analysis will be conducted, but never seeing it through to fruition, is demoralizing. It has been in the strategic plan for a number of years, but simply ignored. School bus drivers and paraprofessionals have earned their right to be surveyed, but we are no less important or valuable, and should have that same right. Money was in the budget for a new logo, and with it, new clothing and accessories for administrators at every school in the county. Would that expense not have been better utilized to pay for this market-based analysis? I for one cannot continue to sit back and wait for this analysis to happen. The closer I get to retirement age, the more important this salary is. Is it really too much to ask that Stafford County Public Schools provide a fair and a living wage? Using the Massachusetts Institute of Technology's living wage calculation for Stafford County, Virginia, it is clear to see that many of our own administrative assistants do not earn enough to meet, or even come close to the minimum for a living wage. I would suggest you look closely at that. I ask that you pay close attention to my coworkers, who will be speaking later. As for me, it's a good thing I love my husband, as I can't afford to live on my own. Is this inequality in salary because I am a woman, and therefore expected to have the secondary income provided by a husband? It certainly feels like that. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Red Amy Bailey and Lorraine Lynch.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tina Redd, a Stafford County employee and resident. I was hired with Stafford County in July 2016 after relocating from Louisville, Kentucky. I brought with me over 10 years of experience in schools, such as a counseling administrative assistant, attendance clerk, and office manager. With all the moves due to my husband's job with the DEA, I have always been awarded my years of experience. This is the first district I have moved to where none of my experience counted. I was selected during the hiring process due to my years of experience and knowledge for the particular job in the counseling I would be taking. When going through the final hiring process with Human Resources, I questioned why I was not being given any of my years of experience. When speaking with Human Resources, I was told that we are in a pay freeze and cannot give experience. I am an administrative assistant to 12 Step Zero. In 16-17 school year, I was contracted at $21,598. If I had been given my years of experience, I would have started out as a Step Five, making $24,437, a pay difference of $2,839. In the school year of 17-18, I am making $21,815. But if given my experience in a Step Five, I would be making $24,681, a difference of $2,866. In total, the last two years, my family and I would have benefited by an increase of Recently, upon questioning again why my years of experience was not counted, I was told again, we are in a pay freeze by Ms. Klein in Human Resources. I asked Ms. Klein if there was a document stating we are in a pay freeze, not allowing years of experience, and she stated there was no document to show this. However, select support staff on bands have gotten raises and given credit for their experience. My question to you is this: How can you provide experience credit to select staff support and not others? What do I need to do, or say to convince you, that I deserve equity, benefits, and compensation? How long do I have to wait? Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Bailey, Lorraine Lynch, and Karen Purington.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Bailey. I'm a Stafford County resident, and I am also an administrative assistant at Colonial Forge High School. I am here tonight to highlight some of the seemingly discriminatory practices that are taking place against this predominantly female group of administrative assistants who are being overlooked and ignored. I must begin by saying I work with and for some pretty amazing people. The faculty and staff at Colonial Forge are professionals, and my complaint does not in any way reflect upon them or anything with my day-to-day work environment. I consider myself quite privileged to be a part of the Forge family. Prior to being hired full-time at Forge, I was an active parent volunteer, heading up and volunteering for several booster clubs within the school, as well as a substitute teacher. I was asked to serve on the superintendent's parent advisory committee, and did so from 2015 to 2017. We had the distinct privilege of having the superintendent's ear while hearing firsthand from him his goals, priorities, and plans for the Stafford County Public Schools. In these meetings, we often heard about his plans for creating pay banding for all service staff. Bus drivers, monitors, maintenance, technology, nurses, and paraprofessionals were all put on this new scale first. They were, and in my notes, there was mention in one of our meetings that for the 2017-2018 budgeting year, administrative assistants would be looked at and brought into this pay banding phenomenon. In all the published documents, there was to be provided a market-based compensation system for all Stafford County Public School employees. This was in the school board's fiscal year 2018 budget priorities, which was voted on and approved in the October 11th, 2016 school board meeting. That's now. That's this budget, and that is missing. We continue to be put on a scale that has no meaning, as it is outdated, is frozen without documentation, and has no possible movement. There has been no market-based compensation analysis for administrative assistants, and last I checked, we are a part of all Stafford County Public School employees. So we need you to help us understand. Help us understand why we are still on a defunct pay scale. Help us understand why there has been no movement in researching a market-based compensation, and help us understand why we, as a group of women, are being left out of another year's budget. Thank you for your time.
After Ms. Purington, Kristy Lewis is the last person who signed up. And after Ms. Lewis, anyone who wishes to address the board is welcome to come forward.
Lorraine Lynch is not able to come to the podium. Am I able to speak on her behalf? First statement?
Sure. Just give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Karen Purington. I'm at 21 Holden Lane, Stafford County. For Lorraine Lynch, she's an administrative assistant currently working at Colonial Forge High School. While you may not know her, there are many employees here who do. You might wonder how so many employees, parents, and students from outside Forge know her. It's because since her oldest son entered kindergarten in 1998, she has either volunteered or worked for the school system. Winding Creek, Barrett, Ferry Farm, HH Pool, and now Forge. In all these places, she did her jobs and more. At the building level, she can say that she's always been treated as an equal member of the staff, valued for her expertise, and treated with respect. She has the support of administration and the faculty, so much so that I have been able, she's been able to be selected as a Service Employee of the Year. She does not, however, have the support of central office. When asked by them to teach staff members of other schools how to use the Destiny textbook system, she did so gladly, in the spirit of teamwork. But when they finally hired her as a full-time But when they finally hired her as a full-time employee, it was at Step Zero. Hired at Step Zero, knowing full well that she was coming straight from an hourly position at another Stafford County school, if she were a teacher, administrator, or had been full-time employee since service, excuse me, employee, service employee, her experience would have been rewarded with additional pay. Your message to her is that in her 10 years of service to the students in the district means absolutely nothing to you. Her job description states that she should seek out professional development, and she does. She took courses through the now obsolete LearnKey system, training offered through Germana, and has been trained and recertified by the Sheriff's Office to direct traffic. She's been trained yearly as a clinic responder for the past 14 years in a row. Did she receive any PDS points? No. But she is paid to attend training during my non-contracted, is she paid to attend training during her non-contracted time? No. But most of her colleagues are, aren't they? You'll hand out Chromebooks like candy, spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a teacher institute, and will make sure everyone else has a salary they can live on except her. Will you keep her at a 12-month position making less than $27,000, a wage which she can only afford to rent a room in a friend's basement? She sincerely hopes not. Please know that she does love her job. She has the best supervisor and coworkers she could ask for, but she can't afford Forge Pride much longer. She needs your support. We all need your support, and we need it now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Can I speak for myself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were, yeah. You're.
Good evening. Thank you again. My name is Karen Purington, a Stafford County resident. I am also an administrative assistant at Colonial Forge High School. In 2015, I was hired by Stafford County Public Schools as an administrative assistant to. My pay grade started off at Level Zero. When I applied for this position, there was a salary range listed with the job posting. I held a bachelor's degree, and I had also worked as a substitute teacher with Stafford County Public Schools for seven years prior to taking on this position. Despite my education and experience, I was started off at the very bottom of the pay scale, Level Zero. It's now three years later, I'm in the same job, the same school, and I'm still at a Level Zero. The only employer I can think of in my job history that did not offer an opportunity for advancement was when I was a paper girl for the Portland Press-Herald Main Sunday Telegram while I was in junior high. But even then, I was able to earn more money by increasing my customer base, and I got tips for great service. If my education and job experience are not sufficient enough to warrant any other level than Zero, and I've now worked for you for three years in the same position, please tell me, how do I move forward from Level Zero? Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Benson. My name is Christina Lewis. I am a Stafford County resident and a Stafford County Public School employee. Before I, I'm going to say, read a few things tonight that are actually your documents, and then I want to tie it together and hopefully I have enough time here. But I have a couple key words that I want you to have it resonate while I'm speaking: all, some, and equity. So, I'm going to reference the Evergreen Study, the efficiency review that you paid for and I believe gave you some good advice. One of their findings was, and I'm going to read it to you, "The 2014 Compensation Task Force worked to address the need for more competitive teacher compensation model. However, the study did not assess the competitiveness of non-instructional staff and administrator salaries. Regardless of whether an employee is an instructional staff or non-instructional employees, perceived compensation inequities cause reduced morale and increased turnover all the same." They went on to recommend that you conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study for non-instructional staff and to address potential issues of external equity. This was in 2014, and one of their other recommendations was that you develop a compensation philosophy. This philosophy should be developed and implemented so that the administration of it is consistent, transparent, and presented in an equitable manner. That you should develop and implement a compensation plan and classification structure that is internally and externally equitable, with potential for career and salary growth, and that allows for flexibility in administration. So, that was 2014. 2015, you said your school board priorities. There was three: competitive salaries for all employees. That's resonated through each one of the following fiscal years. Every one of those documents you have say "all employees." If you look at where we're at, are we seeing all or are we seeing some? Do we compromise our own internal equity for external equity for some? That's where I think we're at right now. Is that the path that we want to be on? Some of us have been moved to a pay-band model, some. But that wasn't the intention of the original plan. In January 12, 2016, Mr. Cook presented this service pay structure. I just want to note that he says the staff recommended for this pay structure are maintenance service, technology service, and basic service staff. I'm running out of time.
You can come back in the three-minute public comment period if you want.
Yes, okay. I'm totally out.
Yeah.
I had some good stuff. All right, thank you so much.
If you have like a few second wrap-up or.
No, it'll take a little longer.
Get another three-minute opportunity when we finish with this one. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on the FY19 budget?
Good evening. I'm Andy Hayes. I'm president of the Stafford Education Association. I'm a teacher at Gale Middle School, and I've been with the county for 30 years. Dr. Benson, fellow board members, appreciate any opportunity I have to speak with you all and to the public. We've been meeting with Dr. Benson and with, speaking with several of you and Board of Supervisors for the last several months. It's our concern and our wish that his budget proposal is fully funded this year. We support a fully-funded 2.5% increase, and we must, we must make sure that everyone enjoys at least that. The people, as you go into the schools, the teachers, the bus drivers, the office workers, the principals, they deserve compensation that reflects the amount of work that they are doing and the quality of work that we are doing with our children in this school system. I also wanted to mention that it's so important that our public gets behind our schools and gets behind our school board and gets behind making sure that the taxes or the revenue for schools is fully funded. We have been behind for so many years, and this is why these speakers are coming before the board so early. We must do something this year that makes a difference. So, we want to ask the question, what are we going to do this year to keep our employees here? They deserve it. Our children deserve it, and our county deserves it, without any excuse for giving up a quality education for a county that can't afford it and should afford it. Again, thank you for your time, and we're going to continue to work hard to make sure this county and our children receive the best quality education that we can give. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes, you know the drill. Mr. Hayes, woo-hoo. Mr. Hayes, you know the drill to sign in, please. You're welcome. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the FY19 budget? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on the budget, open the citizen comment period. No one signed up, but I think Ms. Lewis would like to address the board on any topic that you'd wish.
Welcome back. I'm thankful for this second opportunity. For those, the two departments that have been moved to the pay band, I'm sorry, there are more that were moved on to a pay band, but there are specific two groups that were given an opportunity to be a part of the Service Employee Performance Evaluation. Now, in case you haven't, or if you've forgotten the purpose of this, I just want to remind you, what we said was the purpose. The current SCPS Service Employee Performance Management System is right now limited to maintenance and technology personnel. It is expected that the system will expand to include additional service staff groups in 2017-18. We're now moving on to our next budget cycle, and there's no even conversation of that. So, what did this accomplish for the two groups that are on it? Well, they're getting a pay increase. I believe tomorrow, they're going to find out exactly how much of a pay increase, and this is, from what I understand, and feel free to correct me, for next year, even though we haven't voted on the budget. They're also getting a lump sum. Now, as I understand, that this is effective really from now to the end of the year, but they're getting it in one lump sum? I didn't know about this, did you? I've gone through three years of your minutes from your meetings. I've gone through your finance advisory board meetings. I've watched all these meetings over and over again. I can't find it in the budget last year, and I can't find it in the line item in the budget for next year. So, I'm just asking for transparency here. If you didn't know, I'm asking that you get some more information on that, because I don't see how we're already approving for some for next year. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, would you mind signing in for this hearing? We've got your name on the other sheet. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Come forward, please.
My name is Dustin Thorne, Lib. 30 to 80, Grouse Point Drive. First, I want to say that I married a teacher. I think teachers are grossly undervalued, underpaid. It's a noble profession, but more so, it's a noble responsibility. My concern is that I do not believe our teachers are properly, extrinsically incentivized to challenge our students, to make them think critically. And that concerns me. My son comes home and tells me about his day in keyboarding class. He spends 30 minutes playing Halo, the video game, on school computers. He's told, "Go ahead and get on your phones, rest of class. There's almost an hour left of class." In honors history class, honors history class, he's given questions on a test, multiple choice, where three out of four questions are obviously incorrect. He's not being challenged. In many classes, he's had to remind a teacher when a quiz is supposed to be, because they forget. It's very concerning for him in particular, but all of our children in general. Another topic I'd like to address quickly is, across the county, I see more and more homes going up, but no more schools. More and more children are moving into our county, but not more schools. And that should concern any parent, it should concern everyone here, because every individual student who's added to a class is less attention that student can get for their education. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Please come forward. If anyone else wants to address the board, if you could line up on the side, then you can just come down following our speaker. I recognize this lady.
Yes, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Eileen Osay Kafour. I live on 11 Apple Tree Lane in Stafford County. I'm a resident and also a BSN RN. I'm also a family nurse practitioner student and here to discuss the student health, childhood obesity to be specific. Childhood obesity continues to be a pressing issue in healthcare, the community, as well as the political arena, due to funding and funding we've discussed today. According to the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, although the current overall rate of childhood obesity is held steady at 17.2% from 2009 to 2014, there have been steady increases according to age, school-age children. Specifically between 2010 to 2014, preschool children ages 2 to 5 have shown an 8.9% rate of obesity. 6 to 11-year-olds have shown a 17.5% rate of obesity. Ages 12 to 19 have showed a 20.5% rate. Demographically, African-American and Hispanic children comprise the highest majority or rates of obesity cases, representing 41.4% of the cases, with lower-income household families comprising the higher rates. Childhood obesity also translates to adult obesity due to factors such as diets high in calories, fat and sugar, low physical activity, genetic and medical conditions. Within these factors lie other factors, including socioeconomic factors, financial constraints, cultural norms and practices, lack of access to healthy foods and physical activity. Looking at the issue, we can see how childhood obesity continues to be a pressing issue on both the school system, managing children dealing with obesity-related illnesses, the healthcare system as providers of care to the patients, and patients themselves physically and financially and politically where I come to you because of federal programs that have to fund a lot of the food and activity programs. Current solutions: federally-funded school lunch programs with focus on providing reduced and free lunches to low-income brackets, to children, and the Farm to Fresh program from the Department of Agriculture, trying to encourage fresh foods to support the school lunch programs. My proposition and research has been to institute a community garden in the local schools, which can be piloted, of course, to introduce both nutrition and educational programs
Just came from the Utilities Commissioners, and they also seem to think that there's issues
focusing on farming, specifically fruits and vegetables, and cultivating the fruits and vegetables from the gardens to supplement the school lunch program and to provide greater access to children beyond just the low-income children, thereby reducing the overall rates
in this county, but they're not. It's called opportunities.
of these school-age children.
So, we ought to get a more positive slant.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I heard that comment about not enough schools. There's 30 schools, sir. Five high schools, eight middle schools, 17 elementary schools, number 18 elementary is on the book. It's only 280 square miles in the county. 55 is Quantico, leaves 225 square miles. This week, I sent the school board what I call my motivation to stop gerrymandering in Stafford County. I want to see five school board members, not seven. And with the money that we don't have two of them for, guess what? You can put it in the school lunch program. That'll supplement your nutrition program. I always like to ad lib for things I hear. Many people ask me, who do I represent? Well, I represent the cicada of 2013. The reason is because you'll be 17 years old when you get your PhD. That's your public high school diploma. If you were lucky enough to get a PhD from New York like I was, then you might even get a regent's diploma, which means that you might even qualify for one of the SUNY colleges. That's a State University, New York. What a concept, but always remember, Virginia is a Commonwealth. It's not a state. Commonwealths were great in the 18th century, you know, but this is the 21st century, so we all need to wake up. So, let's see, how are we going to divide the 225 square miles so there's no gerrymandering? If we name them northwest, northeast, southwest, southeast, and like I said in my email, I would make the superintendent the chairman of the school board, because superintendent's got the word "in" in it, and of course, brain's got the word "in" in it, the word "things" got "in" in it, the word "minds" got "in" in it, and "instincts" got "in" in it twice. But that wouldn't be fair, and everyone who knows me knows I love Lady Justice because she wears a blindfold, because I don't want no favoritism from any of you. I just want fairness. So, if we all got to elect who the chairman was, then we'd get a representation of the whole county, not the Rock Hill District or the Hartwood District. And Falmouth is my favorite. It should become a town, and then we could have a mayor there, and then we won't have to worry about these names of traditions of men, which is in Colossians 2:8, "Beware of the philosophies of men and not of things according to Christ." Amen.
Thank you. If you could please sign in, Mr. Waldowski.
get a regent's diploma, which means that you might even qualify for one of the SUNY colleges. That's a state university in New York. What a concept, but always remember, Virginia is a Commonwealth, it's not a state. Commonwealths were great in the 18th century, you know, but this is the 21st century, so we all need to wake up. So let's see, how are we going to divide the 225 square miles so there's no gerrymandering? If we name them northwest, northeast, southwest, southeast, and like I said in my email, I would make the superintendent the chairman of the school board, because superintendent's got the word "in" in it, and of course, brain's got the word "in" in it, the word "things" got "in" in it, the word "minds" got "in" in it, and instincts got "in" in it twice, but that wouldn't be fair, and everyone who knows me knows I love Lady Justice, because she wears a blindfold, because I don't want no favoritism from any of you. I just want fairness. So if we all got to elect who the chairman was, then we'd get a representation of the whole county, not the Rock Hill District or the Hartwood District. And Falmouth is my favorite, it should become a town, and then we could have a mayor there, and then we won't have to worry about these names of traditions of men, which is in Colossians 2:8, "Beware of the philosophies of men and not of things according to Christ." Amen.
Thank you. If you could please sign in, Mr. Waldowski. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, come back to the board. That brings us to the board member committee reports and comments. Mr. McLaughker? See, are you with us?
Hello, Madam Chair, how are you?
Yes, do you have any committee reports?
No, I would just like to say that this weekend, the school board worked hard. Can you hear me?
Yes, but we're going to come to board member comments after we do committee reports. So we'll be back.
I got nothing for you.
All right, we'll be back. You'll get a chance, we'll be back to you. Ms. Egan? None? Dr. Chase?
Yes, I attended two meetings of the Career and Technology Education Advisory Committee. At the first meeting, the committee was working on rubrics for a number of CTE scholarships. At the second meeting, we had a presentation from Amy McIsaac, who teaches the Nurses Aid Program at North Stafford, and she was accompanied by four of her students. And I was very impressed with the presentation. Ms. McIsaac had very positive words for the Teaching and Learning Summit. The experience had inspired her to make connections with other teachers in her building. For example, her students have been reading The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks, and they will be sitting down with governor's school students at North Stafford to discuss the book. And she also had her class reach out to the graphic imaging class at North Stafford to design a safety coloring book, which was used by the students to teach safety to the kindergarten students at Park Ridge Elementary. So I just thought I would share with you that the Teaching and Learning Summit seemed to be quite inspirational for at least one of the teachers in Stafford County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Young?
I also attended the CTE meeting, and so I echo everything that Dr. Chase is saying, but I also wanted to add some of my own comments. I want to encourage our community, especially our parents, to encourage their students to investigate these programs that they love, and that they could excel in, not feeling obligated to move towards college path if they're not ready and they're not passionate about it. There is a stigma with this, and associated with, you know, not going to college, and I think we need to move away from that. Students that could work with their hand, I think it's just an art, and it's great, and we need to encourage them. People that speak second, you know, second language, for example, they use a part of their brain that a lot of us don't use. And so with that said, I think we need to change the way how we think about CTE.
Thank you. Ms. Decatur?
Thank you.
Ms. Hazard?
Just a quick one. The Head Start Policy Council met, we will also meet this week, but I just wanted to let everybody know that last Monday night was one of their literacy nights that we will be serving in the future. They had over 200 attend, so become ready to serve on our evening, and I think, as I said last time, there may be a little performance for us as well. But these are being very, very well-attended, which is a wonderful thing. And then I was very interested in what the last, or second-to-last speaker spoke about obesity, and I wanted to share what came up at Policy Council. Last year, Head Start got a grant from the Stafford Hospital Foundation to have dietitian interns at Head Start. At the beginning of the year, they did, and I'm going to be real broad about it, they did some testing of their young students, of obesity levels and stuff, and with these interns and stuff, when they retook the measurements at the end of the year, it was a 4T, four-zero percent decrease in obesity rates, and I would really like to say thank you so much to Stafford Hospital Foundation. Ms. Healy, I may be bringing something I would love to recognize, but they have gone actually to several things and spoken on what they did and this 40% drop. So just wanted to say, I was very intrigued with what you were saying, but I just want to also tell you a success story within Stafford County at our Head Start program.
Thank you. And I have two reports, just briefly. I am, as the chairman, I am the representative of the school board on the Stafford Education Foundation, and there was a meeting on February 5th. There was a discussion of long-range planning for the foundation, discussion on potential future membership on that foundation. But more relevant to us is the scholarships. The foundation is going to provide a scholarship to each of our high schools, and they are working on the criterion applications, and Ms. Hazard has been very much involved in this over the past few years, and she's going to be invited to participate in that, along with me. Another thing we can work together on, Ms. Hazard. Also, the innovative teaching grants. I think most of us have really been blessed to be in classrooms of teachers who have gotten these innovative teaching grants from the Stafford Education Foundation. They actually provide funding to the teachers based on a grant application that is put in, they're evaluated, and then they give the grants, and the teachers can use those funds in the classroom. There is usually a recognition celebration that we're invited to later in the spring, and we don't have a date, that the teachers are invited to as well, and they usually give you some examples of what is being done in the classroom, and it's pretty amazing. So I thank our foundation for the hard work that they do, and the extras that they're providing to our students and our teachers. And I want to thank Ms. Johnson for getting the minutes out so promptly, so I had a good basis to give this little summary. Yesterday, the Student Health Advisory Committee met right next to the CTE committee, and the speaker tonight, Ms. Eileen Osay Kufour, came and gave us this presentation, and we very much enjoyed hearing her report. She's actually in a master's program that she's working on, and this is part of her research. I think she's got some great ideas, and perhaps it's something that we can explore. I can't imagine that our students would not very much enjoy being part of a community garden. I don't know, you know, how practical or how soon we can do it, but usually, you know, no? All right, you can help eat it, Ms. Hazard. But it's something to look into. And actually, her presentation was right after Mr. Dunbrack, they had of our Nutrition Department, and it was very timely, because he talked about, you know, the nutritional challenges, you know, that he has, and he was talking about, you know, students and got into some of these issues, but one thing I want to share, because never thought of this before, he said when he was in DC, he had a young student that didn't believe that eggplant was a vegetable. They thought, they showed it, and they said, "No, there are no purple vegetables, you're making this up." And then he said they took it, and they sliced it up, and they cooked it, and the child said, "Well, you know, it's okay, but it's still not a vegetable." And it's, but it's the opportunities, and what he's trying to do is introduce, you know, more diversity into the foods that, you know, go to our students, and of course, he has some restraints because of the federal guidelines and where he can get the food, but, you know, he did say he very much enjoys, you know, putting, you know, fresh fruit and vegetables, you know, onto the menu. And he did say that there is going to be a tasting event at Brookpoint High School on April 24th in the evening, that the parents, community are all welcome to attend, and he's going to be looking for direct community feedback. They're going to have some items that are already on the school menu, and some new items that they're going to be thinking about introducing. So I assume we're all invited, as well as members of the community, and he said he would really love to have a big turnout, and, you know, have people come out and do the tasting, and then give them some feedback on that. And I have to say, I very much appreciate him staying for our meeting, because he lives in the Richmond area, and had to get home to get his child from the daycare, but he stayed for our meeting, and, you know, it wasn't too early that he got out. The third speaker at our meeting was First Sergeant Michelle Gibbons from the Sheriff's Office, and she spoke to us about the Youth at Risk Committee, which it really has some fascinating things going on, and I'll give the booklet that she gave us to our clerk to put in the record. If anyone has any interest in that, they have meetings, I think they're going to have a meeting in April, we were told of. All right, well, that closes the board member committee reports. Mr. McLaughker? Wake up.
Me again?
Yes.
Are you ready for me now, Madam Chair?
Well, if you can talk about anything you want.
I know, you're very controlling, but I like it. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess the first thing I'd like to say is, you know, thanks so much to the school board members for having a great, productive meeting this weekend. Saturday, it was the pouring rain, we worked hard, we hurt each other, we had our differences and opinions, but it was a professional, productive meeting, and I'd like to say that I don't, in my six years on the board, I don't ever remember two and a half hours later coming out with a school board budget. So thank you to fellow school board members and the staff that supported us. The second thing I'd like to say quickly is, thanks so much to Dixon Smith Middle School for bringing this cross-country issue to the board. I witnessed our middle school kids compete last October, I believe it was, with 250 young men and women from our seven schools. They competed at the old Cliff Farm property in South Stafford, but, you know, I was so impressed with the camaraderie and the students, and the sacrifice that our staff made to make that event happen, and the coaches. So lastly, I'd like the board to just keep in the back of their mind, cross-country to our division is a good thing. I think, you know, for $17,000 to $20,000, I know that, I know people don't want to hear that money, because we're so, we have so many things to fund, but just keep it in the mind, it's not this year, maybe 1920, we talk about our seven middle schools coming forward with that proposal, and so I would be happy for other board members to ask and join me in seeing if we can...
Classroom, Mr. Pope at James Monroe High School in Fredericksburg asked me to be a visiting lecturer for his IB psychology class. It was really great to visit another regional high school and to learn about, more about IB psychology. And finally, I want to publicly express my concern about what happened with our midterm exams this year. As an educator, I know that it is extremely important that our students gain experience preparing for and taking comprehensive exams. Regardless of whether they plan to attend college, there are qualifying exams required for all kinds of careers. In addition, I want to apologize to teachers who administered and graded midterm exams, and then had to go back and regrade or recalculate semester grades because we failed to communicate effectively. I hope, moving forward, we can keep our focus on student education and achievement rather than student grades. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Young?
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a comment first, I would like to inquire when the Governance Committee is going to address my suggestion of moving the citizens' comments above the staff report, and wasn't sure how to go about that. Do we bring that back up?
We sent out two dates to Ms. Hall, I think it's going to be the 28th, but we were still waiting, but we had two dates out there, and we're coordinating with Mrs. Schedule, because she had other dates that she had, but I believe right now the 28th is going to be the date, but it has not been publicized yet, but that's...
Okay, great.
From our email chain today.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard.
Okay, thank you. I am for pay raises for every employee, not just teachers or men, but everyone. The crossguard, and bus drivers, everyone. The crossguard in Hampton Oaks is my ex-husband, and he hasn't had a raise for God knows how long. But yeah, raises for everyone. I had the pleasure of visiting Park Ridge a few weeks ago, January 29th or so, when a father surprised his daughter at school in front of dozens of other students. He returned from deployment from Afghanistan and met his daughter, and I met the mother also, and, you know, I thanked him for his service, so that was very moving, and talked to principal and met more teachers. I think I had one more here. For the CTE, I think I plan to look into how the business is, you know, we talked about that already. But lastly, tomorrow, I will be attending a presentation in Richmond. This is going to be held at Supreme Court, this presentation is for an award, Harry Byrd Junior Leadership Award, and it's going to one of our North Stafford students for exhibiting excellence of character, leadership, devotion to duty, and academic accomplishment. So, yay!
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Decatur?
I just wanted to thank those of you on staff who spent your Saturday with us. I know that was probably not the first thing that you wanted to do, but I do sincerely appreciate you taking the time to sit there and wait around for, just in case we had any questions. I do think that it was a very productive meeting, and I just want to thank Dr. Benson and everybody that helped prepare us for that meeting. I want to thank all of you who have come up to talk to us at this public hearing and in previous public hearings about the budget. It's very important that we hear from all of you, and nothing falls on deaf ears. I know several of us are taking notes, and we're listening, and we're doing as much as we can to address all of the issues that we still have in this county while we're working to, you know, to make certain things better. We're all very aware that we still have a long way to go, and I just appreciate hearing from you, so that, you know, just as a reminder of how far we still have to go. I also want to take a minute to thank those of you involved with the SEA for setting up the liaison program. This year, it was very nice to hear from a member who is dedicated to, you know, communicating with me, so on Monday, I had a chat with her, and it was a very productive conversation to hear what she's hearing from you guys, and for her to bring that to me was really, really nice, thank you. And I know that she was able to speak with not only myself, but my counterpart on the Board of Supervisors. So thank you very much for doing that, it was a very effective way to communicate, and I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard?
Sure. Just a couple things. I enjoyed speaking about the innovative teaching grants. I had the pleasure of joining Dr. Benson at Margaret Brent Elementary School with Mr. Hernandez, with Mr. Fernandez, and they were working on something way over my head. Mr., Dr. Benson understood it much better than I did, but it was great seeing them. And while I was there, Margaret Brent is in the middle of doing a one-book, one-school. They gave us a copy of The Lemonade War, and Ms. Healy, they want us to come on a Friday, and they can show us what they're doing, but the whole school, from the kindergarten to fifth grade, is reading one book. They're doing all kinds of neat things on Fridays, so Ms. Healy, they want us to come and see them before they finish the book, they're on chapter eight. So that was really neat to see the excitement for reading, which most of you know I love to read. I found the comments of our speaker about the rigor of our studies, and I know that was something that our Learning and Organization Development Office has talked about. I do think we've also conducted an analysis of our program of studies, and part of that analysis does go to the rigor of our programs, and I certainly hope this board will address those reports. We had four very, very detailed reports that Dr. Chowry, before she gave birth, spent a lot of time on, and I just, I don't want the board to just sort of take those reports and not get to them, because that is, rigor is only one portion of it, there's a lot, a lot in there of the students that are accessing our programs, how can we get better access? And I just think that's a discussion that this board needs to have, so I'm just, would want to throw out there, I hope we get there. I am not going to go over all the wonderful things going on in our sports teams, I love opening the papers and seeing all of our sports, winter sports doing so well. I can brag a little bit, so I'm taking your thunder, Ms. Healy, that the Mountain View High School Wildcat Battalion finished first in their inspection out of 11 at Hermitage High School this weekend, so that's very exciting, and...
That's the Marine Corps JRTC, correct?
Correct.
For those who may not be.
Or what we're really supposed to call, and then just on a...
First year.
That's right. And then on a personal note, I'd like to say a little hello to my pen pal at Rocky Run Elementary School, to Hannah. I love Ms. Lynn Hare's program that she gets us in, and then on a final personal note, I wanted to congratulate Junior Maggie Sharp of the Mountain View Basketball Team on her 1,000th point as a junior shooting in basketball, and it was a great night, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. I'd also like to echo my colleagues' comments about the work session on Saturday. I think we got a lot accomplished, worked well together, and I think it's really important that we are all able... that we are all able to express our opinions and show respect for each other and come up with a consensus on where we're going with the school budget. That will be back to us at the next meeting for approval. I want to thank all the staff, Dr. Benson on down, but particularly Mr. Fulmer, because he did his briefing, he got the materials together for us, and I think it was your preparation and presentation that led the way for us to be able to move forward with that, you know, with our work on the budget. So, thank you all. Also, I want to thank Ms. Johnson for arranging our wonderful meal for school board appreciation, week, month, whatever, but we-
I also have another gift for you, silverware.
Oh. Well, we had to earn some of these gifts, but the food was very much appreciated, so thank you. We enjoyed it. Sorry, sorry you couldn't join us. I'm sure you had better things to do on Saturday. Also, I wanted to say I was able to join Dr. Benson in his visits to A.G. Wright in Garrisonville last week, and of course, it's always fun to be in the schools, but to be with Dr. Benson in the classroom is even more fun. And we had, we had a great time. I actually, I think, learned some math. I always had problems with graphing, but understand it a lot better now. But what is really impressive is our students. I mean, it's amazing, you know, what they're learning now at these young ages, and maybe that's showing my age, but, you know, what they're able to do in the classroom is incredible, and that's thanks to our wonderful teachers. So, there are teachers out there that are, you know, motivating and, you know, making, you know, our students reach for challenges, you know, in the classroom, and I think, you know, that that is the majority of our teachers, and I'm grateful for that. And the class in Garrisonville was a special education class, so we went from a, you know, math to special ed, and very special students in there, very friendly. Did the young lady get to eat her celery? I had to leave early. Oh, good. There is, they had a food tasting in the class, and they had all different kinds of food, including sushi and hummus and celery, and one of the students in there kept saying, "I want to eat the celery, I want to eat the celery," and so I'm glad she got to eat that. Finally, I'd also like to echo my colleagues' comments on the budget. I mean, it is important that we hear from, you know, groups, employees who, you know, may feel with reason or perhaps without reason, but, you know, that they're being left out because, you know, we try to be inclusive, we do try to look at all the groups. The problems that we face is that there is a finite amount of money, and we tend to try to focus on a group, get that corrected, and then move on. So, I think we have a, you know, another group to be, you know, putting that focus in. I do, you know, want to note that in the budget, we did include funding. It's not a pay raise, but to increase our administrative assistance at the elementary school level, something we've been talking about for probably about a decade, to have them be there all year rather than be off for a month and not available to help. But, Dr. Benson, I would like to get some information about this pay freeze and how long that's been on, and, you know, how that affects the employees, whether that's across the board or only in certain areas, if that's our, with the board, if we could, you know, have some information on that, because I wasn't aware. I know we've had freezes in the past, but I didn't realize it was still continuing, so if that's something you could get, you know, for us, if that's, no objection to that. All right. That's the end of our comments. Your turn, Dr. Benson, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to pick up with where you left off, and that has to do with our pay scales. You know, all of our pay scales need to be modernized, and when you have a step model and you fail to advance the steps on an annual basis, that's what creates the issues that we're experiencing, as well as having folks being brought in at step zero on the scale. You know, that's in order to not have employees that are entering the division kind of leapfrog employees that are already in the division, but we'll be happy to bring back some additional information for the board. We are making progress, okay? I mean, we've come a long way in a few years' time in doing that modernization. I know the board is committed to getting to all of these scales, and we will. But there are some, Ms. Healy, you pointed out, there are some limited resources. You could look at the issue and say, "It's just, it's so big that, you know, we just can't touch it," and it will get worse and worse. Or we can identify some areas and begin to get some improvement, and I think that's what we've done. But I am confident that we're going to get to every one of these scales, and that the board is committed to making sure that that happens. So, I look forward to continuing to work with the board to do just that. I also would like to note that at the work session on Saturday, that we talked about calendar development for the 2019-20 and the 2020-21 school year. I will be bringing forward to the board two calendars for each of those years, so four calendars in total. One that will have a traditional post-labor state day start and one that will have a pre-labor day start, and we'll get plenty of input from the, of the community, but we're going to try a strategy that's a little bit different than what we've used in the past, so I'm looking forward to doing that and working with the board to bring some recommendations forward. And then finally, as we move into the regular agenda, I just want to note that this evening, again, we have a number of policies for review by the board. This will be a recurring pattern here as we move through the school year. We have policies that need to be reviewed on a five-year window, pretty much in every part of the organization. Many of them have been adjusted based upon changes in legislation, but there are some that have not, and we just want to make sure that during a five-year period that all of our policies have been reviewed and updated. Many of them will be basically code reference changes, but there will be some that have some substantive changes in language, but this will be part of our work through the remainder of this current calendar year. And with that, I think that concludes my comments. Madam Chair?
Thank you. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent?
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Young. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There are no action items tonight. So, that brings us to information. First information, 11:01. Approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations as assigned to and reviewed by the Department of Student Services. These are the regulations that Dr. Benson was just talking about, and I think you'll recall, we've had some on the past agenda, and there, sounds like there's going to be on the future agenda. And, Dr. Benson, am I correct in that these changes are primarily to be consistent with the changes in the law or the regulations?
Some of them are-
Commonwealth?
A lot of them are pretty minor changes in terms of language, or they might be an updated code reference. On an annual basis, we get the more substantial changes and recommendations from the Virginia School Board Association, and we take care of those immediately. These are ones that have not come up for any revisions in the past, so, but we have a practice of wanting to review them in a five-year period.
Right. That's a good practice. Is there any question for Dr. Benson about any of these proposed revisions to policies and regulations? That'll come back on our next agenda. Does anyone want that to come back on action, or is it, we'll see if we can put it in consent? You know, if anyone comes up with any questions between now and then, just send them to Dr. Benson. If there's any questions, we'll put it on the, for action. All right. The next is, this is a good one. Approve the nomination of the Boots House Program for the Virginia School Boards Association Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award, and authorize the school board chairperson to sign the nomination packet. This is a brand-new award, and I know Ms. Hazard had talked about this as a possibility, and it would be a, you know, an excellent opportunity to showcase the Boots program that we have at Stafford High School. But it has participants from, you know, throughout the county. And the VSBA requirement is that this award, or the nomination for the award, has to be approved by the school board at a formal meeting, and then has to be signed by the chair and submitted, and the submission date is on March 5th. They'll accept that electronically, so I don't think we'll have any problem. But if there's no objection, this will come back to us with the, you know, the proposed nomination at the next meeting. Dr. Strike is saying yes? Thank you. It's a wonderful program, and I think it's very unique and something that Stafford, you know, should be very proud of. All right. The next thing we have-
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Hey, I just want to say, good job by Dr. Chase for pulling this out of the weeds and bringing it forward to us. Ah, that's it.
Did you pull this out of the weeds, Dr. Chase? Well, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. All right. That brings us to 11:03. Approve the 2018-2019 Middle School Program of Studies Middle School Course Catalog. Anyone have any questions about this?
I do.
Ms. Hazard?
I do. And I'm not sure who to direct this to. I know there'd been some concerns or things raised about, I believe it's the Advanced English or English Extended or something. Is that now across all the middle schools? That is offered everywhere. And maybe I got off track last year, but I know some concerns were raised about was each, were each of the middle schools offering this Advanced English or Extended English or whatever it was? Something I know had happened over the last couple of years. I just wanted to make sure we were, everybody, all schools have it. That's all I want to, yep. Or you can call me later.
Come on down.
Whoever. And I may have it somewhat, but I know there were some-
So, in the, the English classes for the middle school program in the proposed catalog before you, unless it's stated, so we had all of our middle school principals look at our new catalog, unless it's stated that it's at specific schools, it's being offered next year in all schools?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I don't see any.
Madam Chair, I have one.
Okay.
Uh, no, thanks for this rundown. The, the last item is honors courses. It says added designation for middle school, high school honors. So, it says Algebra I and Geometry had an H, designation of H added to those codes. English Extended had middle school. See, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm asking is, are we, I just want to make sure that the middle school kids understand that, and I hope this is true, that these extended courses and the geometry and the algebra, they are actually count towards your high school cumulative grade point average. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. That isn't-
And so, are we going to make sure that they, we are identifying that somehow?
Yes. So, the letters in the course catalog are related to our student information system, and we made a note there in the middle school catalog, if I'm correct, that the H, the H is related to high school, and the C is related to middle school students? Is that correct, Mr. Nichols? Yeah?
We only have, you receive a credit for Algebra I and Geometry.
Right. And, Dr. Strike, don't they have a choice if they choose not to, not to accept the credit? They, that then the grade won't count on their GPA?
I believe that's the case with our policy.
That used to be the case. I don't know if it's still-
No, I think it still is the policy.
So, so they can take the course, have the advantage of the instruction, but then choose not to count it as a high school credit, and the grade won't count against them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Healy, if I could clarify, I now know what it was. I'm sorry, I couldn't read my own writing. On all of these courses that have things for Extended English or the math, the description says, "Selection for this course is based on a set of criteria, including SOL scores, reading assessments, writing skills," I'm picking an English one, "and grade." I guess what I'm going for is, that seems to be fairly consistent, that it's a, look at a totality of things to determine whether a student can be selected for a higher level. It's not one course, one grade, ever, and then you're out or in. Has that finally been eliminated?
There still is a process for those extended courses, but our process that we used this year brought all the stakeholder groups together, internal stakeholder groups together, to reexamine and update the process for selecting those courses. The big conversation is in mathematics right now, but also we're reviewing the rubrics for the English courses, too.
Okay. It's just, I think if a student's selection for something based on one specific criteria says yes or no, is a little harsh, and I know that's something you all are working on, and so it appears that that has taken hold.
Yes, so there, yes, there's a, there's a whole series of different pieces, but we're really looking closely at rubric and teachers connecting with teachers, which actually is something that we're doing across the board, is that communication with different levels with teachers and our school leadership.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. That brings us to the Fiscal Year 2018 Quarterly Financial Report. Is that you, Mr. Fulmer?
It is. So, I'm going to give an overview of the PowerPoint slides, and then we'll can jump into the actual attached report that's on the agenda as well. So, I'm going to start just with a high level of our revenues and expenditures, and really just touching on areas that we're, want to keep you guys informed of and make you aware of things that we're monitoring. And then we will just do a quick review of our funded contingency count as it stands now and expect to changes to that, and our capital reserve fund that's held up by county local government. So, state revenues. I mentioned this past weekend that our ADM was pretty much in line with where the state had us, so there is no major changes in our state revenue at this point, except to mention that we're expecting to get the full amount that the state budgeted. They will, will release new numbers probably late February, early March. They usually release them when the General Assembly for the state releases, with also some updates to our FY19 budgeted revenues. And then we'll get the final calculations in June, which typically will be adjusted for our ADM for the entire year, because the ADM is calculated, it's an average daily membership over the entire year. So, when I say that we're on target, we take our September 30th enrollment, and it was within, I believe, six students of the state ADM number. Federal revenues are tracking as expected right now. I just want to point out that right now, we've only collected 6% of our federal revenues. Had me alarmed at first, but as I start digging into it, we've received in January, so this report cuts off in December that I'm providing for the second quarter. We received $500,000 in Impact Aid, our normal non-DOD Impact Aid funds, so gets us up to a more reasonable number. And that Impact Aid number actually comes in all the way through September for this current year, so we are on target there. And our other local revenues, which including the county local transfer, I will just point out that our 5% holdback, the county holds 5% of our appropriation until the FY17 audit is done, and we did get notification at their, I believe, their last board meeting that they released that hold, so we will be getting all of those funds as we expend them. So, a couple of the expenditures that I'm going to dig into on the next couple of slides are just legal fees, contracted services, and water testing. But first, I just want to mention our salaries and benefits are still being monitored as far as potential salary laps, and as I did last year, we'll report back several times as we get closer to the end of the year and have a better handle on how those salaries are going to shake out for the end of the year. And it's usually towards the end of the year, this time towards the end of the year, that we start having more laps that pops up, and we monitor it pretty closely. And I mentioned this weekend of our, on the benefit side, health insurance for next year is looking very favorable compared to our initial projections, and obviously, that means that this year, if they're basing it, you know, this year is on a trend to be decreasing or probably have some savings there, so we'll have some firmer numbers when we come back in a few months. So, legal fees. We had an original adopted budget of $240,000, and through December 31st, we had actual expenditures of $226,000. So, obviously, there is a concern for the remainder of the year. We already have $80,000 budget transfer in place to try to hold us over for a while, and that's coming out of our funded contingency that I'll touch on here in the next couple of slides. I do believe we're not going to keep up the same pace that we had through December 31st, and we had a couple unique situations, but we'll stay on top of that and report back to you guys if I feel it's going to continue to be a concern, but those bills have started to slow down drastically. Contracted services- Contracted services, I reported on this on our first quarter as well. We've come back to you guys on a couple of occasions where we've had a contract out for speech paths, nurses, and things like that, or compliance we have to fill, and we were unable to fill the F T E. So we obviously transfer the position savings for not filling the position into a contracted services line, but the contracted services cost more than an employee would. So we also have taken some money from our funded contingency account. So it's another area that we're watching closely. And then the water testing, we have not expended that whole $174,000, but I wanted to go and bring it to your attention. That is the estimate that we're receiving. We already provided Mr. Haran's department and O and M approximately $66,000. And out of our funded contingency, as that water testing was an unforeseen expenditure, and more likely than not, we're going to have to transfer them some more money to help cover that $174,000. So our funded contingency, just want to point out, this is a new concept in FY 2018. As we've started to budget closer on all of our expenditures, we felt it was necessary to have a little bit of a dedicated reserve in the current year. It's not going to carry over from year to year. So we had a funded contingency. Wanted to point out just some of the activity in that account. So it includes uses of $556,000. We had some areas of savings that we transferred in. So of that $556,000 that we've used, we have over $200,000 coming back in. There were temporary transfers that we were waiting for insurance proceeds to come in, for some roof and design work that was for the V M L, our insurance provider reimburses us for, and some other year-end stuff. So they were just temporary transfers. So kind of have a -- and I'm also showing the $80,000 that, as of 12/31, hadn't come out of the account, but we're already in process of doing that. So I wanted to kind of bring you up to speed a little bit there that that is coming out of the account. It's in process now. So -- but we currently have about $215,000 in our funded contingency. What I haven't shown here is transferring any money out of that into to cover our water testing and the remediation for that water testing. So also wanted to provide you with each one of these updates, the status of our capital reserve fund over on the local government side. So we had a prior year balance at the end of last year of $1.7 million. And for FY '17, there was excess meals tax revenue and debt service savings that they transferred into this capital reserve fund that's held at the county government. And we have sent over a request of using $226,000 in addition to our year-end carry forward for the Parwood Elementary wastewater treatment facility, which brings our balance to about $2.1 million. And we have to maintain a minimum balance per county policy in that account of $1.5 million, which leaves us with $661,000. So also, should be attached on the agenda item is the proffer statement. So the county, at their quarterly report, does a update on current status of proffers. And the first column there, second column, is the school's balance of about $1.7 million. And I'm told that is up to date of all of the transfers, so it should be an accurate number.
Look right at me. You knew that was going to be.
I know. And then also attached is just a -- the actual quarterly report that goes over our revenues, expenditures, what was originally adopted, what was adjusted by our functional categories. I'm not going to walk through each one of these line items, but I'll just point out some of the footnotes at the bottom will designate that our adjusted budget is higher than our adopted budget, and that is because of our encumbrances from the prior year that were open and roll into the new year. So just wanted to share that with you guys, that if you look at it and like, oh, why did our budget go up by $10 million ever was adopted? It'll be things that were in progress but weren't completed at the end of FY '17 that roll into the new year. And if you guys have any questions on this report as you review it, feel free to email or call. Just let me know.
Which one?
On any of them, but more specifically, the actual, one with real numbers on it showing the actual versus budget.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Madam Chair, if that's okay. The water testing, are you referring to the lead issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So it says here, "Expect total cost $174." Is this to resolve the whole problem? Like, I haven't seen any detail yet. I'm still waiting to get some detail as to what the problem was, how we're resolving it, objective goal at the end resolved? Because if this is just for testing, do we know how to resolve the problem on the whole? And I'm not sure if that's an answer that you could give, or is that --
Scott, do you want to see real quick on it?
The $174,000 that was referenced is for testing only. As the report that I believe I provided to the school board provided the status of where we are with the testing. And the first phase of testing for the post, pre-1986 facilities, we've started the remediation actions. And the remediation actions include, but are not limited to, replacement of faucets, replacements of components of water fountains, bubblers, those type of things. So they were done over the holidays. And so the follow-on testing of those, to make sure that we corrected the action, are in the process. So there's a process. And in the first phase, we are approaching the end of that process to ensure that the remediation has, in fact, achieved the results.
So I don't know too much about what needs to be replaced, but just some images of Michigan. Are we replacing faucets only and not the pipes?
That's correct. Part of the process helps localize where we believe the lead, if it is, in fact, higher than the 15 parts per billion. If it achieve -- if we're over that, part of the process is to localize where we think that that lead is leaching from, whether it be a component. In the majority of the instances, it's actually a component in the water fountain or a bubbler or the water faucet. And so, again, our secondary or the follow-on testing to that is to confirm, in fact, that the lead levels are much lower after we've changed that or nonexistent. And so that's the process. If we come back and we find that that's certainly the lead levels are still high in that particular faucet, then it causes us to go to the next level of remediation, and we have to start walking backwards and try to determine if it's in some of the contiguous piping associated. But we certainly don't have an issue resembling the Flint, Michigan issues.
And I'm not going to go back and forth, but I don't have a warm and fuzzy feeling about this lead issue and problem and resolve, but we could talk.
Absolutely. Be happy to. Thank you.
Mr. Ham, while you're here, this isn't a, I don't think it's a lead water issue, but when Dr. Benson and I were at A G Wright, the teacher of the year whose class we were in said she thought it would be really wonderful if that broken water fountain could get fixed because it's been broken for quite some time. So I don't know if that's been passed along to you, but since we're on the topic of water fountains, I thought it would just put that down.
It has now. Certainly. Yes, ma'am. We can address it.
She said it's towards the front of the school, and because that's broken, they have to go, you know, all the way to the back. And it's, you know, that's one of our, you know, more crowded, more crowded middle schools.
It's a middle school.
Yeah.
Don't we have a building engineer in that middle school?
We do.
Hmm.
Well, if you can get that worked on, we'd --
You bet.
Certainly appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up the topic.
I'd like to say --
Yes.
I'm off. Sorry. I'm sorry. Apologize. The issue with the Flint water issue, right, is about insufficient water treatment as opposed to the challenges that we're experiencing, which has to do, in many cases, with the fixtures. The manner in which we're testing is allowing us to isolate what is causing the issue such that we can remediate it.
I was referring to the lead level, though, not necessarily, you know --
Certainly.
Yeah. But because I'm thinking that the lead level is coming, it's in the water, and the water is coming through the pipes, right? So just changing the faucet alone is not going to reduce the lead level, is it?
Yes, we think it will. Yeah. Because what we think it's, in a number of these circumstances, it's occurring because of the --
So that's right. If I could get more information, that would be great.
Some component of the fixture is causing the lead to be in the water as opposed to it being a problem with the source not being treated sufficiently. And we're working really closely with our public works folks, and I think that a lot of the remediation that we've already done has been around. It's been, it's been in the fixture itself for a fair number of the issues. So I just want to make sure we kind of, we kind of get that out, that we don't think that we have a problem that is of the magnitude that occurred in Flint, and it's not the source. It appears to be fixture or pipe-related. Mr. Ham, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Could we get a report on that? Just something brief, one page? This is where we, the issues are, this is what we've done, and this is what we, you know, plan to do in the future. Just kind of an update, because I think that's something the public would be, you know, interested in as well. And it affects all of us because it's across the schools. Any other questions on the budget for Mr. Fulmer? No? All right.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. That brings us to the announcement of upcoming meetings. The next regular school board meeting will be February 27, 2018, at 7:00 P. M. And the Mountain View Field Hockey Girls State Champions will be with us to recognize their accomplishment. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.